Good evening. I call the regular Planning Commission meeting to order. It is 6:30. It's Thursday, October 18th, and we're located here in the City Council Chambers at Samamish City Hall. So, welcome, everybody. And I will start with roll call on my left tonight.
Eric Brooks.
Bachman.
Larry Crandall.
Shanna Collins.
Roschino Farrell.
Jane Garrison.
Retuja Endapure.
Excellent. So, we have all seven commissioners present tonight. So, we have a quorum. And the next item of business is approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. And the agenda is approved unanimously. So, next item of business is the approval of the minutes from the October 4th regular meeting. Anyone have any corrections or comments?
I move to approve the minutes of the October 4th meeting.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes of the October 4th, 2018 meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed, say no. The meeting minutes are approved unanimously. So, the next item of business is public comment. And this is the non-agenda section of public comment. We only have one person in the audience tonight. No? You sure? Okay. You have three minutes. All right. So, no public comment tonight. Next item of business is new business. Whoa, I always wonder if I can do this in five minutes to get all the way. I did it. Okay. So, tonight is new business. There's a work session tonight on the 2019 Comprehensive Plan docket applications. So, we are here tonight just -- this is the work session portion. We're here to listen to staff. There are only three docket items this year. Two of them are from the city, and one are from Mary Wicker. And all three are text amendments, right? Yeah. Okay. So, with that, I will hand it over to staff for the presentation.
Okay. Can you guys hear me okay?
No. You might need to --
I'm only five feet tall, so the microphone reach thing is a little awkward. Thank you. Good evening. So, we are going to be starting the review of the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Amendment Proposals. And before we look at the actual proposals, I wanted to just briefly look at the process and some background information, just for a quick review and to give a little context before we jump in. On November 1st, after the public hearing, we'll be asking Planning Commission to make a recommendation to City Council about which items to place on the docket for 2019. So, tonight, there's no action requested. It's just really making sure that you're more familiar with the proposals and that you have a chance to ask any questions about them. And I'm having -- okay. Here we go. So, one thing to remember about this is that the Comprehensive Plan Amendment process is really different from the way we do most things here at the city. The decision of what gets placed on the docket and which amendments get approved is entirely at the discretion of City Council. But also, that Planning Commission doesn't need to recommend proposals as they've been submitted. You guys can recommend variations on what's proposed as well. So, I wanted to just kind of jump in and take a look at the overall process with the key dates. So, the first step in the process is deciding which proposals get to move forward to be put on the docket for consideration in 2019. And so, for both Planning Commission and City Council, we've split this into two meetings. So, tonight, you'll have your work session. Then, you'll have the public hearing and your recommendation on November 1st. City Council will have their study session on December 3rd, and then the public hearing and a resolution to set the docket on December 4th. And then, any items that are docketed will be considered in 2019 during legislative reviews of the individual proposals. So, my job during this process is to make sure that you have the information you need to make a recommendation on the proposals. So, please feel free to ask questions tonight. You can also email me or call me with any questions as they come up during your review. Okay. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about the Comprehensive Plan process and the amendment process before we look at the actual proposals. And as you know, Samamish operates under the Growth Management Act, which is a state law that mandates coordinated and planned growth, as well as coordinated and comprehensive land use planning. So, to do this, the Growth Management Act has 13 goals that you see on screen. And this is what feeds into our required and our optional elements for each city's comprehensive plan, including Samamish's. So, I know you're all very familiar with this already, but the Comprehensive Plan drives everything that we do here at the city. It drives the day-to-day decisions of elected officials, of staff. City staff use its policies, its data, its maps, and our daily work. And even when we're applying for grants, we're often asked to talk about how the application is supported by the Comprehensive Plan's policies and goals. So, there are two types of updates that code allows us to do to the Comprehensive Plan. Every eight years, we have a major update. And this is where we look at changes to policy language and updates to the urban growth area. Our next major update is scheduled for 2023, and planning will be starting on that a couple of years ahead of that. That's going to involve a lot of outreach, a lot of community engagement, as we look at what updates are needed. And in between the major updates, we have the annual review, which is what we're starting tonight. So, the annual review is generally for technical updates and corrections that don't require changes to policy. So, under the annual review, there are two types of amendments permitted. So, we're going to quickly talk about each of those. And then, we'll jump into the thing that I know you're eagerly awaiting for. So, as Planning Commissioners, you're familiar, obviously, with both types of these amendments. The text amendments are changes to the actual text of the Comprehensive Plan. A good example of this was a proposal from last year to update language in the Parks Element and Parks Background section of the Comprehensive Plan to reflect the updated Parks Recreation and Open Space Plan. Then, there is also the site-specific land use map amendments. That took me at least three practice turns to go through, which changed the future land use map in the Comprehensive Plan for an individual property or a small group of properties. And you'll be considering one of those amendment proposals from the 2018 docket next year in 2019. Okay. So, as Chair Collins already mentioned, we had three proposals this year, two from the city, one from a citizen, and all were text amendments. And we're going to be reviewing them in the order that they were received. So, the first proposal comes from the city and relates to the Urban Forest Management Plan that you've all reviewed and that we are anticipating will be adopted in early 2019. And this proposal is to update the language in the relevant Comprehensive Plan elements to reflect the policies and goals and strategies of the Urban Forest Management Plan once it gets adopted. So, if it's docketed, specific text changes will be determined before legislative review begins. And the goal here is really just to create consistency between the two plans and make sure that the Comprehensive Plan reflects the new data and the goals in the Urban Forest Management Plan. Are there any questions or comments on this proposal before we move on?
I assume the sequence is also a requirement of this. So, we can't approve a docket -- run through the docket process without the approval of the Urban Forest Management Plan, right? There's a potential calendar conflict if things get off track.
I'm going to let David answer this.
So, is the question -- so, if -- tell me if this answers your question. So, we will have to -- it's much the same way that the Housing Strategy Plan has worked. So, the idea is we'll adopt the Urban Forest Management Plan, and then, using what is in that plan, come back to you with a set of Comprehensive Plan Amendments that will reflect the contents of the plan.
Yeah. Just verifying that if for who-knows-what, some unforeseen reason, the Urban Forest Management Plan gets kicked off the list of work items because of the priorities, like, let's say, traffic, for example, take priority, then we still have a docket process calendar. I assume that if we get to that before the Urban Forest Management Plan has been resolved and approved, then that just falls off until next year or this item.
Right. Yes. This will -- this is dependent on completion of the Urban Forest Management Plan. So, until the -- you know, as far as the plan is pushed out, which hopefully is not that far, this will also be pushed out.
Okay.
I had -- just want to thank staff for the work they put into this. And I know it started a long time ago, and we're getting closer and closer to the adoption of the Urban Forest Management Plan. And I wanted to, let's see, indicate that I do read the material in front of us. So, will, in the glossary, on the Comprehensive Plan, things relating to Urban Forest Management Plan probably will become in that -- in the glossary? In other words, Urban Forest Management isn't in the glossary. It probably should be. That's -- okay. That's all.
Any other questions? Okay. So, we will move on to the second proposal. This proposal comes from a citizen and is a request to add an errata sheet into the Comprehensive Plan and also create a system for tracking and updating errors, as well as other updates. The applicant provided three examples, which I believe she sent to you today. In the current Comprehensive Plan, where she's identified errors or updates that should be addressed, two are to maps, and then, one is an update to a term that was previously changed but not updated in the actual Comprehensive Plan text. And the goal here is really to reduce confusion for the reader and to ensure that the Comprehensive Plan reflects the city's current terms and conditions. Any questions on this?
I did have a question. So, for the errata sheet that Mary has proposed, is that done typically in some other cities? And how frequently will we have to update that if something new goes in? Or is it just like an annual process? I just want a clarification on that.
So, I'm not sure if it's done by other cities. We'd have to do more research. I know she mentioned that it's done in some King County plans. But I believe the process would be looking for an annual update and system. So, we'd have to look at that if it gets docketed.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions, comments?
So, it would be something that staff would keep track of during the year if someone has something to submit. And then, only one time per year would all those changes be made, all at the same time?
Correct. Yeah.
And would it still be a docket item every year? Or is that something you need to look into?
I --
It probably needs to be a docket item every year
Yeah.
-- to approve their errata sheet.
We'd have to look into it, but I would think so.
David. I think we -- I believe Mary's not here this evening, obviously. I think she's planning on being here on the next time we meet. So, hopefully, she'll be able to answer some more specific questions about how she sees this operating in practical terms.
I have one more question. I'm sorry.
Oh, go over to her.
I have one more question. Do we presently get feedback like this from the public on, you know, if they notice any errors or any omissions? And then, if -- should we decide to go with this, will there be an easy way for somebody just to do this input?
Since I've only been here since June, I'm going to look to David.
The comp plan, I'd say, isn't as widely read as we might like. But, you know, I don't want to speak for Mary as to her particular vision on this. I don't -- we don't typically get a lot of feedback on errors in the Comprehensive Plan. And, you know, in the case that there is an error, obviously, we do have this annual process to go through and correct those errors if they need correcting. But we don't get a lot of -- we don't get a lot of feedback, no.
Thank you.
It has been something that Mary has been bringing to the attention, certainly of the Planning Commission, probably, I'd say, like, at least the last year or more, usually with errors on mapping particularly. And I think it takes, like David's saying, I'm sure the comp plan is not a widely-read publication, but somebody with a very keen eye could pick out a lot of little technical errors. And Mary certainly has over the time. So, yeah.
And I would, you know, again, I won't speak for Mary. But, you know, we have -- there's certain -- there's technical errors, certainly, that are important to update. There's also -- but they don't always affect, you know, as Mary mentioned, the city applying for grants or being in compliance with the Growth Management Act. So, I think what is being suggested here is more on the technical side of things and not necessarily on the more serious side of things. But again, that's just my understanding. And -- but I also want to make sure, you know, that there's different levels of error, I guess I would say. Some are more cosmetic, and some are more, you know, more serious, have something to do with being compliant or, you know, that type of thing. So.
I guess that I wonder about mapping and things like that. Is it expensive to come in and have you printed off already thousands of these things? And do you have to redo? What does it take? Does -- what about the work that it takes to hire people to redo the maps and all that? Is that a big deal? Is that a long process?
I'll start, and then David can pick up. I know there have been copies that have been printed and shared pretty widely with staff here, and I think with Planning Commission and City Council as well, I would assume. So, there'd be some expense to reprint those. I think the amount of work to find the -- typically, to find the contractor who created the map in the first place and get them to amend it in the correct way would take a decent amount of staff time, since the documents were created so long ago now. But Mary did have a couple of emails that she shared with me. So, we may be able to track down those people. But I do think there'd be a decent amount of staff time required to do that and then to hire the person to fix the error.
And I would add that in addition to staff time and expense, it's also the time of the commission and the council, you know, who we're going to spend meeting time discussing this with you, because, you know, we can't make these changes unilaterally. They have to go through the whole process. So, I think part of the thinking -- part of, you know, when you consider this proposal is, you know, is it worthwhile to have this become part of the process if it's not necessarily, you know, if it's just cosmetic? So, I would think of it also in terms of your time and the, you know, calendar time, since we only have so many dates together every year, and there's lots of other things going on. So, another way to think about it.
Thank you.
I would just -- just to comment on that, most of the things I've ever heard Mary Wicker propose, that she, when she says errata sheet, sound relatively simple. Now, you know, I'm only hearing them, so maybe there's some that are not. And I think that we would certainly expect that however this could, in theory, be implemented, there'd be some kind of a plan around that so that staff could vet each suggestion and say, oh, well, this one is a big deal. Yeah, we're going to set it off to the side. But this is just a language cleanup. And I would also sort of suspect that after about one or two cycles that it would trail off, and there'd be very few after that. But to me, if there's something that's really not right, this is a pretty key document for the city, it's probably worth a little bit of effort to make sure that it gets cleaned up.
I think what would likely happen in this case is that if you are interested in the general idea of this errata sheet, that, you know, obviously, we're not going to be able to come up with some administrative process on the fly here. But if you were to docket this item, then I think part of the legislative review process next year would be figuring out where it -- what role it's going to play and what kind, you know, what roles we as staff would take on in facilitating that process.
Maybe it's good that I'm not last. I didn't have too much to say. The only thing I was going to do, and I will do just a couple more if Eric allows me to, first was compliment Mary on it's so good to see somebody reimagine something and come in a, well, it's printed form, you know, something we see. She had it pretty well spelled out. Then, I listened tonight, and a few other things came. And I'll just say this summary, because it might affect the opinion when we get ready to look forward in this. So, I'm not making an opinion. But I did hear annual, and annual's building here a little bit. I heard the term, I guess it's the same term, staff time and cost to do this. So, let's look at that. And on the lighter side, because I thought Mary might be here, I wanted to ask a couple of questions. And I'll be very quick on this. And maps were brought up. Therefore, if a gatherer wild mushrooms noted that the map list was outdated, would they get off their toadstool and hop down to City Hall to fire an erratum update? I mean, you can see what I'm thinking about. So, Mary did open this up for, hey, the frogs can get in here and say something. And on -- or to the word Samamish as -- can you spell that without any Ms? T-H-A-T. Oh, boy. This is a tough group sometimes. The local historical society has a number of references to Samamish. And where that first double M, there's only a single one. So, if that was found, you know, how important is that? To me, it is. But very few people know that it was kind of just one M and Samamish. And this is a good one. There might be so many in the audience that understands this one. And this is my last one. Say in the Urban Forest Management Plan, they use the -- they were referring to a tree, and they talked about tamarack, and they really meant larch. They're the same thing. Okay. That's all.
You're making us -- you're making us feel uninformed, Larry. We can't laugh at your jokes
Thanks, Larry.
-- because we don't even know what trees are.
I always know I'll get a chance to learn something whenever I'm at the Planning Commission.
So, I do just also want to clarify, using your pre-joke example. So, and again, I'd like to hear Mary's explanation of this. You know, we could have, you know, if somebody identifies an error in the comp plan, we could certainly have a sheet that said this is an error. But for legal purposes, that would not -- legally speaking, that would not actually be enforceable as part of the Comprehensive Plan. In order for it to be actually part of the Comprehensive Plan, we need to go through this process that we go through with everything. So, my question, when we get to two weeks from tonight, will be, what role will that play that this annual process does not already play? Because this annual process is the time where we go through and make those changes that need to be made. So, while a list of errors or whatever might be useful, legally speaking, it wouldn't actually be part of the Comprehensive Plan. So, we wouldn't be able to really use it for anything besides having it be just a reference. So, that's also something to think about.
David, to follow up on that. So, are you saying that the changes or the omissions or errors that Mary has noted, those could come in as text amendments annually, and then we could just update the Comprehensive Plan for that instead of just adding a errata sheet at the end? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. That helps.
Okay. But I'll point out that part of Mary's comment, which I think is valid, is that she's brought these things up in the past, and nothing's happened. So, her campaigning for this idea is more of just creating a to-do list to make it easy for everybody, that we don't have to depend on anybody to necessarily keep track of things and then submit them individually through the docket process. We have a list of minor cleanup issues that we keep track of somehow, somewhere in a to-do list. That's really all she's proposing, is a to-do list. And then, when it comes time for the docket process, it's an item on the docket process. I don't -- I mean, I don't think that's anything more than that that she's suggesting. And her basis for that is the fact, and she's given us some examples of things that she thought should be cleaned up, and perhaps they're minor. Maybe it's not necessary. But if it's something that's important to her, there's probably others out there that, if they had the opportunity to see that there's a missing and or a reference to a table or something, that it'd get cleaned up. And I don't think we're asking, she's asking, or we're expecting anything overly complicated here. It should be pretty simple. So, annually, keeping track from a to-do list of things that need to be adjusted or corrected seems pretty simple to me.
I would agree. And I would say that I think, in effect, we have that process. We just don't call it anything. I mean, and I would say the reason maybe those things hadn't moved forward is either because she hasn't applied, you know, submitted them in an application, and that, you know, in our daily work as staff, it hasn't risen as an issue that, you know, is worthy of spending council and commission time on, because it doesn't -- it either doesn't affect how we operate on a day-to-day basis, or, you know, it doesn't put us out of compliance with the GMA or anything else. So, I guess what I'm -- I guess my point is just that this process somewhat exists already. And in the case of what you're talking about, Commissioner Bachman, I think that could be accomplished without -- outside of the realm of a Comprehensive Plan Amendment. So, again, I'm not passing judgment on what is included here, and I'm interested to see what she says. But I guess I'm trying to clarify that the -- this process already exists in some form, and that's what we're doing tonight. And I wouldn't confuse it with the ability to actually change the content of the Comprehensive Plan outside of this process.
So, I'm -- I hear what people are saying. And I don't know, I'm not going to speak on behalf of Mary. But I see some utility in this, in that in building codes, oftentimes, they'll -- you'll go to the code producer's website, and they'll have an errata sheet there, because there'll be things that have been changed out since the publishing of the code. And sometimes, those things affect the usability of the code or reduce confusion. And oftentimes, we're looking to create this code language so that everyone in the community can understand it. And sometimes, if there's a little reference that's off or missing, it can really, I mean, even to the people that use this stuff all the time, can kind of throw you for a loop, right? So, I think maybe what she's suggesting is that there is a -- on the website of the city, you go to the Comprehensive Plan, and there's an errata link, and you click on that. And you can then quickly go through and see if there's any things. And I would say it wouldn't be done on a yearly basis. It would be a living thing. Like, you know, in January, you might find anything. You might find six things in February, and then suddenly, there's five things in September or whatever. They just kind of -- and then, at the end of the year, it, as you say, gives us a to-do list of things to clean up. And whether or not those things have to be introduced as one of these comp plan upgrades, I don't know. And I don't know if we have to upgrade, update our comp plan to include a vehicle to update it. And I think that's kind of what you're saying. It's already there. So, I don't know if there's some kind of in-between here. I can see the utility in having some errata sheet for the public to refer to and on a living basis, so to speak. But how it gets worked out, I don't know. It's up to you guys.
Well, I'm sure Mary will be here for the public hearing.
Yeah.
And we can have an opportunity to ask questions and engage with her.
Yeah.
And I just want to clarify, I'm not opposed to the idea that you're raising. It's just we can do that outside of this process. That doesn't have to be a comp plan amendment to do that.
Yeah. So, I know when I talked to Mary on the phone, she was planning to be here for November 1st. So, that will be a good opportunity to follow up and get clarity. Great. Any additional comments or questions before we move on?
I have just -- I just noticed I looked in the transportation plan. And I can remember commenting at the council meeting and another meeting about the inaccuracy of the maps, of the background material. And I made a point of it. And I looked at this, and it's still wrong. So, I think I like to have a list that goes on and on, and I would like to put that on the list. I'm ready for that errata sheet. If it was too expensive to do or something like that, maybe that would be nice to know. Then, I'd back off.
Okay. It sounds like there's some more to explore and discuss. So, I look forward to that. But for now, I'm going to move on to the final proposal. So, this one comes from the city as well, and it relates to both the Comprehensive Plan and the Town Center Subarea Plan. Before I jump into what's proposed, I'm going to start by saying what's not proposed. So, nothing in this proposal is going to lead to any changes in density or zoning in town center. What this proposal focuses on is taking another look at the vision for what we're calling quality-of-life areas in town center and as a result of community feedback. So, when we're talking about quality-of-life areas, we're talking about things designed to improve community livability. So, things like sustainability, open space, public transportation, regional stormwater, green building techniques. And the goal here is to really make sure that these areas reflect community priorities and that there's a really clear guiding vision for them. So, if this does get docketed -- whoops, sorry about that. If this does get docketed, the goal is to have community conversations, conversations with Planning Commission and with City Council. with planning commission and with city council, and really get input on what the vision is and use that input to decide if there are text changes needed to the comprehensive plan or not. Are there questions or comments about this proposal?
I'm sorry. I don't really understand what it is you're, where is this coming from or what? It's pretty broad and not very well defined. So I'm, I guess I'm having a hard time evaluating it. Because when you say things like amend the town center subarea plan to address quality of life, mm, okay. Then it's a list of things that could include urban forest canopy, that's a separate plan, public transportation. I guess I'm just not, this seems so broad, I'm not following what, what the objective is or where this is coming from. Can you, can you give me some hint?
I'm going to look to Kelly.
Okay. Well, I am almost six foot tall, so this might be a little short for me. Hello, Kelly Hildy, Planning Manager here at the city. So I would say over, in my recent history with town center, we're hearing a lot of concerns about town center from the community. And this is an opportunity to review the plan, review our comprehensive plan and the topics that are listed in the application, have a conversation of, are the policy and goals outlined in our comp plan and in our town center plan, are they doing what they need to be doing? And engaging that, engaging with the community in that conversation to address concerns, for example, on transportation. When you look at the transportation section of the town center plan, is it going far enough? Do we need to outline options for, I don't know, I'm thinking off the top of my head here. Do we need to go further with that? I know the TMP is going to cover some of the town center items. But again, it's, it's the ability to just host this conversation. Regional stormwater is another issue that we're hearing a lot about. Does the town center plan go far enough with regional stormwater? Do we need to enhance those goals and policies? Do we need to add additional goals and policies to make sure that the town center is doing what it's supposed to be doing in the vision of our community and in the thoughts of our community? If that makes sense? I don't know if I clarified or not.
Is the subarea plan, is it within the comprehensive plan?
It is. It's a, it's a subplan to the comprehensive plan.
Okay, so it does, it does need a docket change to be changed.
So if we do any updates to the town center plan, and just to reiterate what Maryam said, it is not to change the zoning, therefore it's not to change any of the commercial and residential unit capacities or counts.
Kind of like a placeholder? Is that what staff's looking for?
Exactly. And it's to scope this out with city council and say, okay, we're, we're hearing these concerns. What would you like us to do? How would you like to see this plan updated, if it needs to be updated? Do we need to look at the strategies already in, already as part of our work item like the UFMP, the TMP? What is it that you want us to do so that we can maybe clarify or correct anything that needs to be done? So it's, it is broad for a purpose because we do want to get some specific direction of council and the planning commission feel this needs to be docketed and continued on in 2019. So. I hope I captured that.
So I, maybe I'm thick-headed. I'm still struggling a little bit to understand, wouldn't you, why do we need a docket item for that? And here's why I say that. If, if you're going to undertake a community survey and do this process, I presume it'll take a reasonable amount of time. Wouldn't you then formulate a defined set of changes to the comp plan that then would follow in the next cycle of comp plan update, like next year? I mean, this feels like we don't know what we want to do, and we want to do something, so we're just reserving our right to change the comp plan through the docket process. That feels a little vague to me and kind of not exactly what the docket process, as I understood it, was intended for. And I guess partly, I don't know the schedule in my head very well either. Is it realistic to think that what you're suggesting you might like to do could be done, a document produced and everything ready to go by the time the items on the docket are going to get approved? That, what you described, sounds like a lot of work.
It does sound like a lot of work. And I, I know staff has taken a closer look at this. The topics, I believe, that were in the application were the, urban forest, solar generation, our green building techniques, transportation, the green spine. Am I missing one?
Stormwater.
Stormwater. Big topics, right? And some of these already have strategic plans in place. So in this case, it would be, again, looking at, are we, are those, the strategic plans capturing what is in the town center plan appropriately? If not, do we need to go back to the, the source, the town center plan, make any updates to, to further describe goals and policies? Continue working on those strategic plans? And then the next step in the process would be updating regulations. So again, this is, this is placed on there because we are reacting to community concerns and questions. And we will, as staff, will need further direction if this is docketed, what that scope of work will be. So I unfortunately can't answer that because I don't know if this is docketed, what council will ask us to do, especially in cases where we already are in the planning process. Or we may be updating regulations, that workflow. We don't want to interrupt it. So again, we're just going to have to get some clear direction from city council on this.
I guess my other comment would just be that this is one of those that could conceivably have, have significant cost. And even if you said, well, that's okay, I think it's important that, that we and also the council consider the fact that this would involve a batch of work for staff, that then they would not be doing something else. So there needs to be some level of thought about priorities and, you know, what is more important or less important? Because everything is a good idea, but sometimes I think we have to choose what the most important good ideas are. And this particular one looks like it has some costs involved to it.
And I do appreciate that. Thank you for saying that because that could, we do need to balance our current staffing with the workload. Or we do need to be honest that there is going to be a cost associated with any of that scoping so that council is aware of it once that gets narrowed down because consultant costs our consideration for this type of work and this type of specialty work that we don't have that expertise in-house. Thank you.
After our, our emergency kind of community, or rather, the setbacks and all these kind of things that we discussed last time, there was a discussion and we started realizing how long it could take to see some effects from those new regulations. And in some cases, I talked to David Pyle, it could be up to 12 years if, if between the time that something's vested to the time the last house is built. And so that's a long time in not seeing any change. So I'm wondering about how much of the town center is likely to be impacted by changes? You know, would things have already been vested, like as a percentage? And that may be an unfair question, but just kind of wondering, to set that expectation, you know, we change these things, but then it only affects 10% of it, and it really is in a back corner and no one really sees the differences. Just kind of trying to set community expectation a little bit.
Do you want me to answer where we're at with town center development? Would that clarify?
Yeah, I think so. If you can say that, you know, a third of it or whatever is already kind of vested and kind of it is the way it is, it's currently written or whatever, and maybe you could change the community. It is not making any impact.
Absolutely. So from residential density, we have a cap of 2,000 for the town center plan. Anything over 2,000 has to have a update or a review of the EIS that was completed. We have, I believe, 326 units built are to soon open. Sky Apartments is the latest project. So 300, 326 out of 2,000. As for commercial space, I'm going to do the math in my head. The Met Market has about 130,000 square feet. There is a cap of 600,000 square feet of commercial. So Met Market has about 130. I believe there's about seven with the Ichijo, our southeast villages. Those are work-live units. So seven, 8,000 square feet there. I'd have to double-check my numbers. And I believe, I want to say about 12,000, the Bright Horizons with Plateau 120 are SAM apartments, as they're now referred to. So we're, we're, we're looking at about maybe 150, 60 square feet, yeah, for commercial space. Now, that first wave of development has come through. We have not processed an application for that second wave of development. So a lot of you are familiar with STCA. They own quite a bit of acreage in town center. They have not formally submitted a UZDP application or any other application for the town center. So right now, we're not.
But they can't, right?
They can't.
Because it's under a moratorium?
Yep. They can't. And even before the moratorium, there was not an application. And so that next wave of development's probably off another two to three years if they were to just develop Town Center A Zone, which is our mixed use, because that goes through the UZDP process.
Pretty significant amount.
Right, right. Yeah, well, thank you. I mean, it helps kind of put, like if there's a pie chart, right? So it's like one-seventh of the residential units have been built out. But there's still six-sevenths of things that we can have effect on, right? And then one-quarter of the commercials, there's still three-quarters, significant changes that could be implemented.
Exactly.
Excuse me, Commissioner, I just want to clarify. So I wouldn't think of these changes as, as in the same category as the interim development regulations.
Because those are not applicable.
Those, what we're looking at here is more at the comprehensive planning level. So these changes won't include like specific changes to the development regulations for town center necessarily. These are more big-picture policies and goals that may, down the line, affect development regulations. But what we'll be working on, what we would be working on with this is not, not in the same category as the development regulations where it's going to have a great effect on the built environment and this and that. This is more broad, you know, more of a broad exercise that is just sort of looking at the overall feel and then some more kind of under-the-hood aspects of town center rather than radically changing how it's going to look or how many units there are going to be or anything like that.
But it's a precursor, right? I mean, we couldn't, couldn't demand solar panels if this didn't exist first, right? Is that kind of the deal?
Exactly. And actually, that's a better example than my transportation one. Solar generation is one of the items, our green buildings. So right now, if you look at the town center, it really does focus on sustainability and this balance between the built and the natural environment. It really does, and it touches on lightly green building techniques, LID, stormwater. It doesn't get to alternative forms of energy or any other examples similar to that. Doesn't, it doesn't narrow in on that. So is that a missing piece in the town center plan that needs to be addressed? You know, we're hearing a lot more about climate change in recent news. Is that something that the city feels is, that needs to be looked at as it relates to town center? And then, you know, the next steps would be more strategic planning, and then code updates follow that. So that's actually a better example. But we do have items on there that currently are in the strategic planning process currently. And we hope not to, again, affect that workflow, but just do a double check to make sure the town center plan is addressing those issues appropriately. And if those need to be updated, we would need to look at that.
I do think it'd be interesting if this makes it through the docket process where, when we compare today, where we are today as opposed to when the town center plan was written, probably 10 years ago. We're a much bigger city. We have a lot more people living here. There are people who've arrived here after the town center plan was written and maybe don't understand it or even know that it exists. And I think it would be interesting to get that kind of feedback. And I think a lot of our documents were written just as we became a city or not that long after. We were all quite younger and new and maybe, maybe ever so slightly naive and overwhelmed by that huge task of how do you establish a city? And it might be time to kind of look at some of these core documents and say, hey, new people, you might have some good ideas. Maybe it's time to tap into that. So if this makes it through the process, that might be really interesting to hear what our bigger selves, our more grown-up, mature selves have to say about it.
I would just offer one last comment on this, which I think I would suggest, I would just suggest, there could be perception amongst some people in our community that this is a, I can't think of a better word, sneaky attempt to try to change zoning in the town center. I mean, it, it kind of reads differently than that, and I think, I believe your intent is very much different than that. But I think you should keep track of the perception that could be created, that this is looking at the town center and looking at changes in the comp plan, and two plus two is four, right? So I don't know how, if there's a way to put bracket, what you're trying to do. But I think that there could be that perception, and that perception could lead to concerns on the part of the council. So you just might want to think about how to address that.
Exactly. I do want to add, you have an email. It came in around 5:55 this evening from Mr. Eastman regarding this proposal. There is a misconception there that he believes this is to add density to the town center. I can say it a thousand times, it is not to add density, commercial or residential. It also can go the other way, too. If we start creating goals and policies that do not allow the development of the town center, we need to track that as well. We, that sneakiness needs to, to be checked. Again, this is just quality of life. And again, as David Goodman said, it's that broad view. Do we, we're just doing a check-in? Are the goals and policies outlined in our town center plan? And I do want to say our comprehensive plan because there's a lot of related goals and policies in our comprehensive plan as they relate to town center. Let's just take a look at them, do we, and review them and evaluate them. And if there's something that we need to do, a scope of work, that we firmly set those fence posts and, and as we move forward, hopefully without any alternative motives.
And I would add to that, Commissioner Bachmann, I think that's a really great point. Even if the city were to try to use this to raise density, if the city were to change the zoning or density in any way that would end up raising the number of housing units that the town center would encompass, that would trigger an entire other set of work that the city would have to do that would be very time-intensive and very public. So it's not as if we could even do that, if we, even if we wanted to. There's a whole set of environmental documents associated with the town center plan that study it at the level that it is currently at. And if we were to zone it so that it would go above that, that would trigger a whole new set of environmental review that would take forever and, you know, all of that. So not only, we're not doing it anyway, but technically speaking, it would also, it's impossible for us to do that in a, in a clandestine way, anyway.
That's a better word. Yeah, I mean, I think it's just the, the fact that it deals with town center and the comp plan, and it's a fairly vague proposal. You could probably save a lot of us a lot of time and energy by making it very clear how that, that's a restriction that exists already in some of those brackets so that it can't be perceived as something else.
Absolutely.
I think the clarity is extremely important. And I see, I know for myself, I do not have a good vision of what town center is supposed to be. And every map I've looked at is so vague that it just, I just, it's hard for me to imagine how it can move forward because we can't all be on the same page. We can't understand it. So if you would have come tonight with what's vested, maybe on a map, on a plan, and shown us what's already developed, what, what, where the empty places are, what's going on around it, I, I would feel so much better about this. But I think it's so vague, I'm having a hard time with it. I feel like it's not clear, and it does sound a little bit sneaky.
Clandestine. That's good.
I think, just so that I am better prepared, especially for this topic for the next meeting, if you could point to the areas in the comprehensive plan that need to be addressed or will be addressed by this docket item and also in the town center plan, that'll be really helpful for me. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions, comments?
Okay. So I am just going to finish up with a recap of dates. You just finished the work session. And we'll meet again on November 1st for the public hearing and your recommendation to city council. And then on December 3rd, city council will have their study session, followed by a public hearing and resolution to set the docket on December 4th. And after that, any docketed items would be considered in 2019 during legislative review of the proposals. Are there any questions about the overall process or anything else before we conclude?
Well, one second. I just want to talk about the public hearing and how it will sort of go.
Sure.
Just so everyone's prepared to make amendments or changes or, you know, vote. So when we have the, when we come back next, probably a pretty short presentation because we've already been through this. Maybe we spend some time talking with Mary to really narrow in on what she would like. And then, but then it'll be a pretty quick vote, so we'll just go right into it. And I forget, it's just, do you vote on each one separately? Is there a motion for each, there's a motion for each text amendment, right?
I think you could do it one of two ways. You could either do it individually, or you could say, I'm moving to recommend the whole package of three, and then someone could offer an amendment and said, I only want numbers one and two, or something like that.
I think we'll probably do one motion for each text amendment. I'm thinking that would be the best way to go, because I have a feeling we're going to have, I have a feeling we're going to have amendments for each text amendment, so I think it'll be easier to do it that way. Yeah. Anybody have any questions on that process? So if anyone has amendments or wants to talk to staff about crafting amendments, they're always available. And then we'll just hit the ground running when we come back on, is it November 6th?
First.
First. Ah, okay. Anything else? No? Okay. Thank you for that presentation. The next item of business is public comment on the agenda item. Mr. Stickney?
All right.
And you have seven minutes.
I'm going to need a soapbox. No, I'm teasing. Good evening, commissioners. My name, Paul Stickney. I'm at 22626 Northeast Inglewood Hill Road. And as a collaborative suggestion, I would suggest that on staff, the presentation of the 13 planning goals we had, the 14th that got added a few years later because it's of somewhat major significance in Sammamish, which is they added shorelines. So there are now 14 goals. I don't want to speak for Mary, but I've heard her speak several times on this. I've heard all of your conversations, and I'm going to add sort of my input on her errata sheet. I think what Eric Brooks chatted about is right. I think you have the comp plan, it comes up on the screen, and there's a little yellow dot that says, "Choose me." And it says, "This is the errata sheet of minor corrections, adjustments, that we're not going to rewrite the whole document. It's a list that goes over the eight-year cycle in a continuous way of non-substantive corrections without rewriting and without reprinting the, in the whole thing." So that is my idea. It's a list that's kept. If somebody turns something in that is substantive, then that might be the time to do a comp plan, a, yeah, amendment. So I'm not saying I'm correct. I'm just saying that, in my opinion, this is a running list that's on every future comp plan that is tied to a eight-year cycle, and as little stuff is found, it's put on one list in one place that everybody can see. So, you know, we'll let Mary chat on that, but that is, is, is my opinion. On the town center plan, you can guess what I'm likely going to say, but I'm going to kind of keep it short and go at it in a new way. Livability and lifestyle and community character is what this whole community is about. Last Tuesday at the city council meeting, if you've listened to all the public comment, very much people are concerned, and correctly so, with lifestyle, with character, with how the community feels, with where we're going to end up. And many people are caught up in the here and now and are rightly so concerned over the roughly 2,500 houses that Sammamish has put into place since the moratorium came off in roughly 2006. And they're asking a darn good question. How does the town center plan now work when it was created in 2008, when we now have 2,500 more homes in the city, more traffic, other trees that have come down? You've heard a lot of presentations from me over time, so I'm not going to repeat this, but it's time to crack open every single person's, their nutty position on growth. And by nutty, I don't mean they're wrong. I mean, everybody that has a position on growth is very passionate about where they are, and most of those people feel that anybody else who does not agree with them is nuts. So it's time to get all these nutty positions cracked open, but informed with something that never has been informed. What is the right housing mix for lifestyle and livability of housing units that is sustainable, that meets a community need? Because Sammamish has so improved since it became a city. So many more people want to stay here now. There's no question, none, that the city has a significant oversupply of large, single-family homes relative to a few high-end economic group categories. There's absolutely no question that Sammamish is way underserved for many economic and, and the demographic groups for most other categories. That information is what it is. That's found out through, through needs analysis to identify gaps, and then that is further refined by statistically valid surveys done to identify to what extent do our current residents want to stay in the city more or less than, than the need gaps? We need to talk about all the pros and cons. We need to talk about long-term consequences for our city. And at the end of the day, it's my opinion, I can't say what the specific numbers are, but once everyone's nutty, passionate position on growth is informed by how do our housing supplies match up with needs and wants over time? This isn't about today. It's about 80-year cycles of life. How do we want our housing supply in our community to match up? It is my opinion that three things will happen. There'll be fewer large, big, single-family homes that we have an oversupply of. There will be more in centers to meet needs of all economic segments, not just affordable housing 100%, all of it. And there will be some smaller-ish, single-family homes in what Commissioner Garrison's been talking about, potentially mixed in the city. But it's time to shake it all up and get it right and not wait for 10 years. The issue is, attack the hard thing to do, but the right thing to do, and change the comp plan to, to, to guide the long-term housing stock in a residential community for a community advantage for all those living and working here over time. Hard, yes. Right thing to do, yes. It's what needs to happen.
Thank you, Mr. Stickney. Okay. And since he's the only person in the audience tonight, I'm confident that public comment is over. So the next item of business is adjournment.
Before you-
Oh, sorry.
Yes.
There could be business from the planning commission.
I don't have to extend.
You don't have seven minutes.
Actually, this is a feel-good moment for me, and this isn't written down, so not so much bear with me. But I remember that there's two important days in your life. The day you were born, and then the second important day in your life is when you learn the reason why you were born. And just what happened at our joint meeting a week ago and tonight, I'm glad I'm here. This is a good group. Okay.
Thank you, Larry. All right. Any other good-of-the-order-type comments? No? Okay. The next item of business is adjournment.
I move we adjourn.
Second.
There's a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say no. Oh, I didn't say aye, so I also vote yes to adjourn the meeting at 7:31.